Okay, Mrs. Van Heysman, can we get a roll call?
Mrs. Anderson?
I am here.
Mrs. Beer?
I am here.
Mr. Briggs?
I'm here.
Mr. Brinker?
I am here.
Mr. Carter-Munk?
We'll go.
Mrs. Sykes?
I'm here.
And Mrs. Van Heysman is here.
Thank you, and we'll go to item number two, the pledge. Um, can everyone recite the pledge? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Well, thank you all for joining us, and we'll move right into reports. 3.1, Curriculum Instruction, Mrs. Olson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, great. Um, so I have a couple items for you tonight. Um, there are a couple items on the agenda, but first I wanted to say, um, it's hard to believe that this week I was having meetings about kindergarten and developmental kindergarten enrollment and planning for next year. So December and January is the time of year when we start that planning process. Um, and in January is a big month for families that have incoming kindergarteners to receive information about those programs. Uh, as you all know, we've been offering developmental kindergarten now for several years, and this past year we had a developmental kindergarten classroom in each of our six buildings. We expect that to continue, so we're really excited about that. And I think, um, we've got a good process going for that. Um, in the beginning of January, families will be receiving some great information about kindergarten and developmental kindergarten, and, um, an introduction, um, to, it'll be remote, of course. In the past, of course, we had kindergarten, um, information nights held in the buildings in January that coincided with those, that time of year when families would come and enroll their children in kindergarten. Uh, it'll be remote and look a little different this year, but we're excited to meet our new kindergarteners and answer questions that families may have about that. So I just thought I'd say that, that's a big deal, that we're starting to do some planning for next year. That's kind of exciting. Um, along those same lines, I have item, it is number 8.8 on the agenda tonight. This is also the time of year when we bring, um, course proposals from the high school that they, uh, would like to put in their course catalog and to offer next year. And once again, it's, it's hard to believe it, but I think at the end of January and beginning of February, our high school students will be starting the, um, the scheduling process for next year. So that's why they like to get these done. So three courses that you have in your packet, um, from the high school are the titles of the courses are Social Justice, A History of Social Movement, AP Computer Science Principles, and Leadership. So really, um, want to thank, thank the teams that worked on putting those, um, course proposals together and planning for those. Those courses are developed usually by a teacher in the high school who's in that department, of course, who's certified, um, or a team of teachers that are certified to teach that. And they work with our Learning Council representatives in those departments to sort of look at them. So, um, really appreciate, um, those nice new offerings. Um, AP Computer Science, of course, will be part of the Advanced Placement Program. Um, and the Social Justice class, uh, that's a priority, obviously. That's part of the ongoing work to provide, um, opportunities for students to, um, have a curriculum and classes that are culturally responsive. So that's really neat, and really appreciate the commitment and time for those. And those are what we're putting in your packet. So we have those in there. And my third item on the agenda, or on your, uh, second item that needs approval tonight is 8.7, and that is the, uh, monthly, we are required by the state to give a, um, to have the board reapprove or reconfirm, um, learning plans. And it's happened that this month we do not have a change along those lines. Uh, what you see in item 8.7 is really a reconfirmation of those plans that were approved back in early November. So you see those there. Um, and the state does allow for that. We have to sort of upload these things and share them. And the state even has a little question in there that says, "Do you have a, uh, change from the month before?" So in this, in this month, we do not. Uh, and along with that, there's a second piece to that, and that is the, uh, we are, the second piece we are required to report every month is the two-way interaction rates. And I've gone into a little detail at the previous board meetings about what those mean. Attendance, of course, looks a little different this year, so the state asks us to record how many two-way interactions, um, each student has with a teacher. And they, the state asks for two per week and has a minimum of 75%. We, um, well exceed that, um, for all these past several months. And so that is, um, voted under 8.7 as well. Any questions for me on my items?
Mrs. Van Heysman?
Um, a couple questions, Ms. Olson. Um, one of them, with, um, did we, I think, I'm hearing some feedbacks. I don't know if you are too, I apologize. Okay. Um, so one of the questions I had, so, um, I think some families that may have decided to, you know, within DK this year, to maybe not send their children to school because of, you know, COVID, and they just didn't feel that it was necessary or not, 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 not that it's not necessary, but just, you know, the challenges they would face in trying to integrate their child into a, a program at that, you know, this year. Um, do we anticipate, like, our regular kindergarten numbers will be higher because of that?
That's so, that is such a great question. I want you to know that we talked about that in the meeting we had this afternoon. And so we're ready, we're ready for that. This is such a different year, right? I, but yes, we are well aware that that is, could be a concern for families. And so, um, we discussed that, and we certainly don't know how it will, you know, the numbers will, um, be several months from now. But I will say this, a, a key piece to this process in January and February is for families that have questions like that to contact us. And so in January, when this information gets pushed out, like I was describing earlier, we will have contact information in there. Most of it, most of that will be with the principal, which it has been over the past several years. Those are great conversations, and we want, and I think those conversations that take place in January and February will help a lot with that.
Um, I also had a question. I like the new programs at the high schools, so I was excited to see the social justice one. And, but it's, it's for 11th and 12th grade. Do we anticipate doing something for, you know, 9th and 10th grade as well?
I think, well, they are continuing to build on this. Um, and as you, um, know, we, we did have, um, some teachers come to the board. It was last year or the year before. They were, the NYPD classes in 9th and 10th grade, they were revamping those in 9th and 10th grade as well. Um, so this one, and those were the required classes, and so they were adding units there. And also, this, of course, would be in addition to that as well.
Thank you, that was good to read the, the description of those classes, so thank you.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you. I, I just want to, um, reiterate a little bit what Ms. Olson said, and that is that we are accounting for all the students that would have originally been enrolled in DK, whether they stayed with us through this COVID or not. They are all fully accounted for in the numbers for future kindergarten for next year as well. Uh, we're counting on all of them coming in, but we, uh, will do what Ms. Olson said, and that is that we do want to have individual conversations with families that might have questions about next year's placement with this year in mind. Um, also with regard to the learning plan, we aren't making any, uh, changes. We are submitting our numbers for two-way contacts and the, um, learning plan again to the state as we are required to. Um, but we are taking a close look and continue to take a close look at the situation. Uh, on the call I had today with the state county, rather, superintendents, um, we did hear confirmation from the Health Department in Oakland County that we are still at a Level E, uh, which you know was a significant, um, variable that we looked at that caused us to stay remote and not be back face-to-face. Uh, we watch, and they remind us that we watch for a two-week trend to numbers before making any recommendations to change either that rating or, uh, the other factors and indicators that the Health Department gives us each week. Um, but know that we are closely monitoring that on a weekly basis and having conversations. So the obligation to upload the plan again is something that we must do, but we're continually looking at it as a team. I just wanted the board and our community to know that.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson.
Uh, Mrs. Olson, I'm wondering about the kindergarten parents, when you'll be reached, like, when will people expect to be seeing information from the district?
The end of January. That is currently not part of the plan this year, to have that in-person kindergarten night in the buildings the end of January. So we thought it would be more helpful to, in the first week or two of January, push out some slideshows and videos, you know, will, she, will, parents will be receiving, um, or there'll be posted a link, uh, that, and they're already working on it. It's going to be a really nice slideshow with some videos, welcoming, welcoming them to the schools where they can see the principal. And, um, I think we have a welcome from the superintendent in there. I actually think we have some nice video tours of the bill, of the buildings, parts of the buildings that, that were done this fall. Because really, for, um, our kindergarten families, meeting people and seeing my classroom and my, my, my school is a key piece. So that, that should all be going out the first or second week of January. And then with time for questions before enrollment starts, to get those answers going earlier.
And the enrollment process, that will still all be online then, I presume?
Yes, I think we'll have, I'm sure, uh, Mr. Wolinski will have more enrollment process details for us in a few minutes, but I'm, yes, I'm hearing that it, I'm, I'm hearing it'll be remote.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mrs. Olson? I see none, I, thank you, Mrs. Olson. I'd also like to say that leadership class is well-needed, so I'm looking forward to that. I think that's a good addition to the high school. So thank you very much. So that'll move us on to item 3.2, Finance, Facilities, and Bond. Mrs. Abella?
Hi, thank you, good evening. Um, I have several items for you to consider on tonight's agenda. Item 8.1 is, um, in this slideshow that I have here. Uh, there are many changes to the General Fund Amendment, uh, this year. Um, generally, we, we do one every year in December, but things are more significant this year. Um, when we did, um, the original budget in June, we did not have a state budget. So now that we have those figures, we were able to include those. So what we have here on this slide is the actual 2019-2020 audited numbers and the original budget that you, um, approved in June of 2020. And then the amendment that I'm, um, putting in front of you this evening for approval. And you can see that we are changing the structural deficit from $5.1 million down to roughly, um, $1.9 million. Next slide, please. Um, this is just the revenue side, um, individual, um, looking at local, state, and federal. On the next slide, I have some significant changes that I wanted to bring to your attention. Uh, the local revenue was reduced overall, and some of those were, um, to interest income and rental income. With the buildings closed, we are not, um, renting to outside people at this time. Uh, the, the most significant portion of this $600,000 was in interest income. Um, I'm sure you're aware that, um, interest rates have been a little lower this year. So I just wanted to, um, be more conservative and reduce that number. Also, pay to participate in gate receipts are down this year, um, mostly because, um, our limited numbers when we are running sports programs. So I did reduce that number. Our state revenue was amended, um, with the, um, state budget that's now finalized. Um, we restored the $650 per pupil that we, um, estimated in June of 2020 that we potentially could lost, losing our foundation allowance. So that was an increase to our budget for our revenue side of $3.4 million. Also, this year we have a one-time increase for the foundation allowance of $65 per pupil. So that's an increase of $340,000. And I just want to caution you, that's not a year-over-year addition to our, um, foundation allowance that is a one-time, so that could as easily be gone in the next fiscal year. Also, I wanted to bring to your attention that, um, Oakland Schools does give us an estimate in the late spring of our PA-18 distribution. And generally, it goes up about $100,000 over the last couple of years. This year, it was $790,000. And I did reach back out to them because I thought it was a rather large number, but it is correct. And I have received some other information that now that their audit is complete, in the next amendment, you'll see there's an additional $100,000 because of their fund balance triggers, that when they're above a certain percent, they have to distribute it to the, uh, local districts. Also, the Misservice, um, Cost Offset, which is our, um, retirement plans for our employees, that went up about $500,000. But you're going to see on the expenditure side, I also, um, have it in the expenditures because we actually pay that back to the state. The most significant thing that, um, is probably in the budget that we didn't know in June were all the federal grants that came with COVID. So they are all federal money, but they do come to us in different ways. But we do have to count them all, um, on our single audit next year when we're audited. So 11P comes in on the state aid, so it comes through the state of Michigan. It's the $350 per pupil, you've probably heard about in the news. Um, 103-2 is an additional COVID money, also federal, comes through the state. It's $12.32 per pupil, which accounts to about $64,000. We also did apply and received a FEMA grant, and while we applied for about $200,000, we were awarded $57,000. And then Oakland County also awarded us, through the federal, from the federal government, through the county, another $772,000. And then Angela Ashburn, our ECC director, also, um, applied for and received about $127,000 in childcare grants. So that is a significant change to the, um, to the budget, and you'll see that also on the expenditure side. Are there any questions before I move forward?
So Kathy, one question, and we didn't talk about it in Facilities and Finance, but does this budget amendment address the reduction of student population that we've seen?
It does not. Because, um, yeah, the last information that I had, um, we were down a, I don't think there were many students that we were down. So no, I did not address a change because it has not been pulled through to the state aid yet, so I don't have those numbers.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
So that, that will appear in our April amendment by then. It will be reflected in the information that I receive.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. Next slide, please. So like the, the revenues, I've also broken out the expenditures for you by salaries and benefits. This is how we look at things in individual groupings. If you could move forward to the next slide piece, please. Um, these are some of those significant changes, once again, that I wanted to bring to your attention. There was, um, when we go through this process, we, we have a lot of changes in personnel, a lot of retirements or changes throughout the summer. And when we do the original budget in June, I give everybody a stat. We have the percents, we know what the changes to health insurance are. So I actually reconcile all of those payroll accounts to the people that are employed this year. So those people that took the, the place of potentially a retired, um, individual. So all of those things were reconciled, and we had about an overall savings of about a half million dollars in those changes this year. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because it was a significant number, and generally, we're a little bit more flat. We kind of expect that the, the steps and things like that will kind of equalize with the, um, the retirements. Um, one of the other things that we added that I didn't add to my, my slide is that we are adding 2.5 FTE to social work this year. So that is included in tonight's amendment. Um, previously, after the state budget was settled, the board did, um, approve restoring all clubs in Schedule B to their previous level. Um, so that's an add of about $100,000. We've restored the maintenance budget, so painting and fencing and, and some concrete work that we had, um, removed in June when we thought things were a little, going to be a little bit more difficult this year. So I've restored those items. We've added an additional $100,000 to curriculum. Um, we have the new Virtual Academy. And then, of course, all expenditures were reconciled to match those grant, uh, proceeds that I mentioned earlier. Supplies, capital outlay, those items were not, um, impacted during this budget amendment, and all grants were reconciled to the actual awards that we received. So those would be our regular grants we see year-over-year, like Title I, Title II, IDEA. Those things, um, reflected actuals where we do an estimate in the spring. Um, next slide, please. And then, of course, this is just another way to depict those expenses. And I'd just like to point out at this time of the year that if you look at salaries and benefits, that alone is 76%. And primarily, purchase services, you're going to find GCA, which is our Custodial Maintenance and Grounds, Durham, which is our transportation, Oakland Schools, which provides our technology services. I'm thinking on this and somebody else, but, um, so it's edge of staff who provides all our substitutes. So roughly 88% of our budget is our people, boots on the ground, um, servicing students every day. Um, and I believe that is my last slide. Are there any questions about the budget before I move forward with my other items? All right, seeing none, I have a couple other items for your consideration. Can I, I'm sorry?
One second, Mary Ann Van Heysman has a question, Mrs. Van Heysman.
Thank you. Um, this is Abella, just one question. I know, um, there's no anticipated, um, extension on the CARES funds beyond December 31st. Have we been able to allocate those funds? And, and I know we've done a lot of purchases and, you know, our PPE and such. Have we been able to, um, utilize those funds to the maximum?
Right, yes, that's a great question. We've been working on that. I explained all those different buckets, and we're making sure we're filling each one of those buckets appropriately and how they're supposed to be spent. So yes, much of it is, um, the, uh, PPE, the hand sanitizer, the dust shales, the things that we had to purchase. And then there's some, um, payroll resources in there as well. But yes, we have. And, um, I have not heard anything yet about an extension of the CARES into next year. Um, so we're hopeful that we will get some because all of those things, like the Virtual Academy and things that I mentioned, we can put those through December 31st in that grant, and then after that date, it will be, um, in the general fund. Yeah. All right, seeing no other questions, I have 8.3 tonight on your agenda for your consideration. It's some additional awards with Big Pack Five. That's Adams and Upton. And this is specifically for, for the flooring at both of those schools. We did not have it, uh, the design completed before we put the buildings out to bid. So this is for the flooring. Um, 8.4 is for the asbestos award for Adams and Upton that we need to go along with the construction that will be in that building. 8.5 is for the Oakland Elementary Gym Floor Contract Award. And we had a flooding issue in the gym, and this, um, is primarily a insurance, uh, claim that we, we had to take care of. And so that's the flooring award this evening. And 8.6 is our 2018 bond audit acceptance. In 2017, the community voted to approve $59 million bond project. The bond was split into two issues. The bonds were, these particular bonds were sold in February of 2018, and that work is now substantially complete. This means that the projects included in the first series of the bond are 95% done. Those projects included the Athletic Plaza at Royal Oak High School, Keller Elementary, Oak Ridge Elementary, and the first half of the work at Royal Oak High School. There were many other small projects at many of the other schools as well. Our auditors at YO &amp; YO have audited the funds from the first series of bonds for 2018. That is complete with an unmodified opinion, and the audit has been filed appropriately. The audit document is on tonight's agenda for your approval. Um, all of these items were discussed in detail at Finance and Facilities at the meeting that was held just last Thursday. I have a couple other construction updates, but were there any questions on those items for your approval?
Well, not a question, but a congratulations and thank you for getting the unmodified opinion on the bond audit. Um, there can be no higher rating. So while they say unmodified, that's an A+. So congratulations to you and your team. Um, we couldn't ask for anything better, so thank you.
Thank you.
And again, Mrs. Abella indicated, all the construction issues were well-discussed at Facilities and Finance. So if there's any questions, we can answer them also. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Anderson?
Uh, it's not really a question. I just want to say I'm excited to see that the work will be getting started at Adams and Upton. Um, I think everybody's going to be really happy to see that.
I agree.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
So I don't have any photos this month, which I usually do, but the construction does continue at Oakland Elementary and Royal Oak High School. Those final items should be complete as students return back to the building. Work on the next projects will begin. Upton Elementary Gym will break ground early in 2021, and we are pulling ahead some of the work that we can do in both buildings while we don't have any students, um, in person. So I'm sure we'll begin to see some changes in those buildings, um, as the year progresses. So that's what I have for you this evening. If there are no other questions, I, thank you.
Mrs. Abella, there was one comment from Mrs. Fitzpatrick. Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Well, I just wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Abella and to her staff. So, you know, maintaining the budget in a district our size on a year-over-year basis is a lot of work. It's a, it, it makes for a good team when they pay so much attention to detail. And then you heard throughout her presentation, the additional responsibility and accountability now for all of the CARES Act dollars, the county, uh, money that we were given, uh, Ms. Ashburn pursuing additional grants for us to take advantage of for our childcare, uh, grants, and special pricing on all of the PPE and everything that we've been doing that flows through her department as well. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you to Mrs. Abella and her team for doing a stellar job. We, we meet weekly, and she's always, uh, right on top of sharing details and, uh, information with us regarding all of it. Uh, we are hopeful that some new money will flow from the federal government again, uh, back out to schools across the country. Uh, and our legislators are working hard to see if that can happen for us. So I will keep you, um, apprised of any change to that.
Thank you, I'll pass your message on to the rest of my staff.
Thank you. Any other comments? I see none. With that, we'll move on to 3.3, Staff and Student Services. Mr. Patrick Wolinski?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Brinker. Good evening, everyone. Um, I have a fairly brief report tonight to echo what Ms. Wilson said. I can't believe it's time of year where we're talking about enrollment for next year, but we really are, it's December 10th. Um, and to answer your question, um, previously, Ms. Anderson, about enrollment, we are encouraging parents to continue enrolling and doing all this virtually, which has seemed to go very well. Um, as I've said before, this generation of incoming kindergarten parents seems to be very good at doing things online and very, uh, very comfortable with that. But parents who need to enroll in person can do so by scheduling their appointment. So item 8.2 on tonight's agenda, speaking of enrollment, is a recommendation that we have to make each year for Schools of Choice, the Schools of Choice District. Um, as you know, for quite some time, we have accepted Schools of Choice students for children in grades K through eight. And in recent years, um, and we're unlimited for children in K through three. In recent years, we made a change to make all of it limited in K through eight and based upon space of the availability. Um, our recommendation for you tonight is to accept as many as 195 students in grades K through eight. And we broke that down by grade level. So in kindergarten and DK, it's 50 students, um, 25 seats in first grade, 25 in second grade, so on. And again, that's just based on a careful analysis of where, how many children we have currently enrolled in kindergarten, for example, with the assumption that they're going to move up to first grade next year. And then where we have a little bit of space, um, where we might have small class sizes, we said, "Okay, we'll accept this many number of students, but still be able to keep class sizes small." Um, interesting, this will be our third year, next year will be the third year of limited Schools of Choice, um, for grades K through three. And we didn't know what the impact was going to be of last year, if it was going to have a significant difference. Um, the last year of unlimited Schools of Choice for K through three was 18, 19. All total, we enrolled 100 All total, we enrolled one hundred and fifty-four Schools of Choice children that year. The following year, when we moved to limited for K through, K through eight, we enrolled one hundred and sixty-one children. So with that change, we went from one hundred and fifty-four to one hundred and sixty-one. We actually enrolled a few more. Another advantage to doing this limited, and this was, I have to give Miss Fitzpatrick credit for making this change, is it just helps us plan. We didn't know when we were unlimited, we had to accept enrollments right up until the first day of school, which is okay, but we didn't want to have big class sizes. We didn't want to have to hire new staff last minute. With limited Schools of Choice, which we are now for K through eight, pupil accounting rules require us to have a minimum of a fifteen-day window for application and a maximum of a thirty-day window. So the enrollment period is essentially going to be the month of March. By the end of March, we'll have a really good idea of what our enrollment's going to be for next year, and we can plan accordingly. So that number of one ninety-five is a little bit up from last year. Last year, we accepted one sixty, but as you know, we've lost some students over the course of the year. So we have some space available. And that's all I have for tonight. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Wolinski? Mrs. Van Heismann. So, Mr. Wolinski, the key is with the, this hundred and ninety request, the student request, the intent is not to open additional sections. This, this is to fill in or backfill in available space. Is that correct?
Exactly. We're not planning to add staff to accommodate these hundred and ninety-five students. Across K through eight, we have a lot of classrooms. And where there's space in a class to add two or three or four students, we will do so. That adds up. It adds up across the district to where we think we can safely accommodate one hundred and ninety-five children in those grade levels without adding staff or really impacting class sizes significantly. This is where we have small classes where we can comfortably accommodate a handful more students and still have good small class sizes.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Van Heismann.
So just for clarity, Mr. Wolinski, this is up to one ninety-five. So if we start our kindergarten enrollment and we find, you know, our numbers are far greater than we anticipated, how does that math work then? If you can explain to everybody.
Well, I mean, I hope, I hope that is the case. We'll, we'll add staff, which would be a good problem. I mean, we can always hire new staff, but as I said, we'll know that we need to probably much sooner than we would have if we were unlimited for Schools of Choice.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Wolinski.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to Cultural Competence Engagement, item three point four. Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Brinker, thank you. Tonight, under the Cultural Competence Engagement update, we would like to invite some guest speakers this evening. These would be folks that have led our subcommittees that we've been talking about across the four core areas and four core goals that we have set. These have, the action items that you'll hear about tonight are things that the committees are recommending that we move forward with regarding an equity plan for our district, self-examining all different practices within the district, and leading us to a, you know, a much more diverse community and a more responsive school district. We'll hear from the chairs tonight regarding those action items. We were able to hear from these committees as well during the whole group CCEC meeting that was held recently. And we look forward to the next whole group meeting, which will be in January. So tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Yuanis, our principal over at Adams Elementary, and then he will introduce the chairs from each of the four goal areas where they can tell you a little bit about the work that they're doing and the goals they've set for themselves and for the district to work on. Mr. Yuanis?
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzpatrick. Good evening, everybody. First of all, I wanted to just give a special thanks to all of the staff members, parents, and community members that have really worked hard over the last few months to develop and identify some action steps, some much-needed components and an equity plan that we are very proud of at this point. As Mrs. Fitzpatrick mentioned, we have several chair committee members here tonight that will speak on each of the components of the equity plan and provide some more information on that. The first one that we have up here that I can see is the, from the goal area of Curriculum Instruction and Resources. And we have Sarah Olson here to speak to some updates and action items and steps that are connected to this goal area. Thank you, Mrs. Olson.
Hi, Joe. Actually, my department is here with me on this one. We kind of divided up a couple of pieces. Are you here?
Oh, you know what? I'm so sorry, Mrs. Olson. That is my mistake. Yep.
That's okay. I would love to talk about it.
I'm sorry, yeah. Sarah, Mrs. Olson is, Mrs. Olson's going to update us in another area. Curriculum Instruction and Resource is going to be updated by Lisa Shannon, our elementary supervisor of curriculum. My apologies.
Just trying to share a little.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here tonight as one of the co-chairs of this subcommittee. This team actually has three other co-chairs that I have to give props to. Rose Castillo, Cassandra Whitlow, and Ben Rader are also part of the dream team here that are leading this committee. So I have to let you know that they've worked very hard on this. So I couldn't, I couldn't go tonight without mentioning their names. And we have a great, actually a fantastic group of parents, community leaders, teachers on this committee. And again, I have to also give them props for all their hard work. We couldn't do this without them. As you can see, we've divided our work over the last six months kind of into two different phases. Our first phase is really about setting the tone for our work and building a mission statement to drive our work. In the beginning, our team completed research on the different audit tools that other institutions have published. Our committee brought for three main tools that you will see under the resource column there. Ben and I brought these three tools to the Learning Council. The Royal Oak Learning Council is a group of K-12 educators that lead our curriculum work within our district in all, all content areas. They formed a subcommittee, actually, to focus on putting a tool together to really meet the needs of the, of Royal Oak and our district. We were finding that the three tools that we did do some research on didn't completely fit our, our needs. And so they worked together to, they rolled up their sleeves and they worked together, and they created draft audit tool, which you will also see under the evidence column. Currently, our audit tool is being piloted by our Learning Council representatives. They have this month and the start of January to really dig into that tool. Ben and I will be meeting the first two weeks of January with those groups of teachers to review the tool, and we'll be making any edits that need to be made. We will present our feedback and any of our proposed changes back to our subcommittee group. So our subcommittee group will be meeting at the end of January. Once the audit tool is finalized, we'll head into Phase Two. Implementation of the audit tool is where we'll head for the second semester of the school year. Our goal is really to have a completed audit by the, by the end of the school year, maybe finish up during the summer for the main content areas of social studies, science, ELA, and math. And so that's kind of where we're at with the Curriculum Instruction and Resource Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Shannon. Any questions for Mrs. Shannon? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shannon, and other, other committee chairs that have helped develop those goal area goals. We definitely appreciate that update. If we could scroll down a little bit to the next goal area, which I believe, yeah, thank you. So our next Equity Plan Goal Area is Responding to Student Needs and Behavior Policy and Practices. We have one of the committee chairs here, Tracy Dixon, who is a special education teacher at the middle school. So Tracy, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you for all your hard work with this committee. Our committee is, you know, comprised of, we have two, I have two other co-chairs, Jane Flaherty Graham, Director of Special Education, and Myron Miller, who is an assistant principal at Royal Oak Middle School. And we have been working hard with other wonderful leaders from our community and staff in Royal Oak. And we thank you so much for all of your hard work and dedication and passion and drive to do this work. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So our group got started, and we really wanted to look at some data. So we kind of had a slow start. We waited for the board meeting where the data was shared regarding discipline. So we had, you know, we kind of took, waited for that data to, to look at it. Then we looked at some of the frameworks that are being used currently to help guide our work in Royal Oak schools. So we, we set, set the tone with using some of the castle, the social-emotional learning framework that we use when we are talking about restorative practices and all of that. We talked about all of the current things that we are doing, trauma-informed instruction and all of that, and all the work that we have been doing. And then we kind of dove into our student code of conduct that Royal Oak Schools has adopted currently. We surveyed our committee, and we talked about areas that we would like to explore and discuss. We surveyed building administrators regarding strategies and protocols used in Step One of the Student Code of Conduct when a disciplinary referral is written. And, you know, we discovered that there's a lot of gray area when it comes to behavior and student needs and, you know, different, there are different practices used in each building. So we compiled a list of those interventions that are currently being used. And we are looking to develop a comprehensive document for alternatives to suspension based on that information from building administrators on strategies and protocols that they are currently using. We are currently working to revamp our preamble. We will be meeting a week from today to work on our preamble to the Student Code of Conduct, revamp that a little bit, and Step One of our disciplinary code of conduct. And we are looking to compile, you know, a, a document that is more reflective of what we are doing in Royal Oak schools currently, as well as making some recommendations to our, to our administrative staff on the things that we could use, that we could potentially use to ensure that our, you know, our disciplinary practices are equitable. So that is where we are at, and we will continue to develop our plan and work towards our goals. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon, for that update.
Thank you.
Mr. Brinker, I don't want to jump to the next section unless there were questions that...
Mr. Yuanis, I apologize. I didn't mean to step over you at the last presenter.
Oh, that's okay.
Now, as long as the board has a chance to ask any questions to the presenter, that would be perfect. So are there any questions for Dixon? And again, I'm paging through, and I don't see any hand raising, so thank you very much.
Thank you again for the updates. The next goal area is Recruitment, Hiring, and Retention Practices. We have Dr. Parrot here from Oak Ridge and Lisa Haynes, Lisa Haynes also, who is going to be, they'll both be providing us some updates in this goal area.
Good evening and welcome to everybody. My name is Jason Parrot. I'm the principal of Oak Ridge, and I am one of the co-chairs for Recruitment, Hiring, and Retention. Our goal area has really been broken down into two main areas, the recruitment and hiring of diverse candidates, and then the retention of all of our candidates, actually. So we started, much like the other groups did, we looked at the research, and we developed some best practices in the areas of recruitment and hiring. And from those areas, we processed through and we looked for objectives that we really wanted to enact in Royal Oak for the recruitment and hiring of diverse candidates. And then also, we are looking at broadening our base and taking those recruitment and hiring practices into four areas. Basically, the recruitment of individuals, the pre-interview process, the interview process, and then the post-interview process. So our end result and our end goal is to develop a list of objectives and action items that we can do for recruitment and hiring. I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Haynes, who is going to talk about the work we've been doing in retention.
Thanks, Jason. Hi, everyone. So I am leading our retention team, and boy, we've been busy. And we've already put some things together, so we're very excited. So what our focus is, is we're developing surveys so that we can gain some insight and some, maybe some new ideas from teachers and paraprofessionals as to their job satisfaction and areas of improvement. We decided we didn't want to rush and get surveys out quickly because our goal is to do three to four per year. So right now, we have a large list of different kinds of questions and topics that we've asked the team to go in and edit or add additional info to. And our goal is to have a large survey sent out at the end of the year. We also, though, did a pulse survey, short survey, that we sent out to new hires who have been hired this year and last year. And Pat, who is on our team, was kind enough to take the lead on this. When we reviewed it as a team, I think we had like six or six questions, maybe seven. And it's already been sent out to the new hires over the past two years. And Pat let me know today, we've already gotten forty responses. So that is just awesome. And I believe they have till next week to send in any of their responses. When we do start doing the surveys, the ones that start at the end of the year, they will be anonymous so that people feel comfortable sharing their concerns and their feedback, and they don't feel there will be any kind of retribution. And we will be working with Oakland County School District to distribute, to distribute the surveys and then also to do measurements. Is there more down there that I can't see? Ah, I thought there was. Keep going. I think I already said that. No, I just said, oh, oh, backups. I think it's because my screen's so big, because I'm like blind as a bat right now, even though I was last on. Okay, so yeah, it looks like I already touched everything. The other thing I wanted to share is that we had a wonderful presentation from Ben and Lisa regarding the Mentor-Mentee Program that currently goes on with our Royal Oak teachers. And it was good because we were able to ask a lot of questions, find out what's going on, give them some ideas, and it was just nice to see what's already going on. And they're already doing such a super job, so. And that is all. Do we have any questions for Jason and I? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa and Jason, for providing those updates and for also leading that goal area. The next goal area is Professional Development for Staff and School Community, and Mrs. Olson is going to provide us an update here.
Hi. Hello again. I'm back. So once again, we have a great team working on this. My co-chair on this team is Alyssa Reimold, which someone most of you know. And our team started meeting last summer and developed the action steps that you can see here. We have a great team. We had parents joining us from the beginning, and then we continued to have parents join us throughout the fall. So that was really nice. And we have staff members on there, and everyone had great ideas about things we could be doing. We are looking at, some of the action steps include some, collect, I shouldn't say collect, because... I shouldn't say collect, because we do collect and do have information on the professional development that has occurred over the years and the topics and the dates and things like that. It is thousands and thousands and thousands of rows in Excel sheets. So I think that our team's challenge is finding ways to use that data to understand where we are and take steps, take, take next steps. So that's one of our actual steps is to talk about how to aggregate that data. And another action step was to ensure that our new staff have training in the areas that you can see listed here, culturally responsive teaching, implicit bias, cultural proficiency, trauma-informed training and restorative practices. Those are topics that are ongoing in our district and we've had professional learning on those topics over the past several years. But we want to be deliberate in this particular action step about making sure that our new staff have experiences in this professional learning. So there's a bunch of strategies there that you can see that we are going to use to complete that action step. Create a comprehensive list. So the great of opportunities for trainings for staff. We are lucky to have amazing resources around us. Here we have Oakland Schools, we have Wayne Risa, we have Wayne Community College, and those are just a couple of the providers that where we have had staff going out and receiving trainings over the past several years. Many of them are annual, meaning they're always offered. So it's a great thing. Oakland Schools, for example, that list that you see there, that those, that list of offerings has been around for several years. So it's nice that we can go back, revisit. Some of them are series. So we have people attend the series and then more people can join as the years go by. The point is to grow capacity. Go to the next page, Joe. Thank you. Oh, yes. And then, of course, in this remote environment, we are aware of the challenges of how training can take place. Training has taken place the same way for many, many years. Of course, people would attempt, go to a training and attend in person. That's obviously not happening right now. So we want to attend to that. We don't want to say, hey, it was a pandemic year and, you know, and we, we couldn't get people to training. So we're, we are taking it seriously and have an action step about making sure that PDs that our staff needs and wants are available remotely or even flexibly. That's the other thing. Everybody knows, everyone, our, our staff is working, you know, 110% or more and, and being able to have flexibility in how training occurs is a key piece. The next one, communication. I won't read all of these to you, but I really do like, this one came, had, came, especially the second bullet point there, connecting professional learning activities to Royal Oak Schools' vision for equity. So we had an exercise at one of our meetings, maybe earlier in the fall, where everyone on the team, parents and staff, said, what would it look like if people had the proper training? What do we want to look like? Or to be, what does equity look like here? And so we sort of had to, it was sort of a visioning session. This is what we would look like if people got to jot down ideas. And so if you can think forward about what it should look like, then you can back up and talk about how are we going to get there with training and things like that. So that was a neat, that was a neat meeting. And the last one is about community as well. Our team wants to look into resources and opportunities for community members to learn and grow with us. And again, thank you to Alyssa Ryemold, my co-chair and the entire wonderful team, lots of great ideas. And parents brought some nice resources too, to our team meetings as well. Well, thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Olson, for those updates. I wasn't sure if anybody had questions for that goal area.
Any questions? Mrs. Van Heesma.
Not really a question, just a statement. I wanted to thank Mr. Juana and the teams for all the work that they've done. I'm very appreciative of that. I, you know, it's more giving up time with your families and, and, you know, we really appreciate that. The work has been fabulous. It's great to see what's been accomplished. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Anderson.
I want to echo that as well. And I also want to find out, when is the date of the next large group meeting?
That'll be January 12th.
January 12th, okay, thank you.
Mr. Juana, thank you very much for all your efforts. We appreciate that of yourself and your entire team for putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to public comments. So item 4.0, public comment. To make a public comment request during the virtual board meeting, please use the raise your hand button to request to speak for public comment. When I read your name, you will be unmuted and you will have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. There are two opportunities for public comment. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. This is a time for members of the public to express their views. We're paying attention to your comments and appreciate them. However, school board members generally do not respond to public comment during the meeting. Questions that arise from public comment shall be referred to the superintendent or her designee for review, study and possible future response. Would anyone like to address the board? I see one. Tim Chishorfsky. Go ahead, Tim. Tim, are you there?
He's unmuted.
Yep, I see that. Tim, can you hear us? Okay, well, would anyone else like to address the board? We'll reach back to Tim on the second public comment in case he needs to say. I see Dan McGregor.
Hello, this is, this is Dan McGregor. I live at 135 South Vermont.
Yes, Dan.
Okay. So hello, everyone. I'm here to ask the school board to open up the elementary schools for full-time in-person learning. Keeping these schools closed at this point means you're not following the science, you're not following the data, you're not listening to the experts and you're ignoring a mountain of evidence showing these schools can be open safely and pose little to no risk to the students, teachers or community at large. You're also ignoring the devastating consequences associated with closing the schools. First, your decisions are hurting families with the least amount of resources to adapt. That includes low-income households, low-parent households and households of working parents. Lots of people have already either lost their jobs or had to significantly reduce the hours they work to homeschool their kids. Yes, many of us in the upper middle class can simply buy a new laptop for our kids' remote learning, hire a tutor and work from the den, but unfortunately, not everybody has that option. Second, all the students are being set back academically and socially, especially special needs students and those with underlying mental health conditions. These students are being absolutely crushed. And since kids often serve as the first line of detection against child abuse, neglect and food insecurity, it's no wonder that suicidal ideation is on the rise. These kids were already at a disadvantage and will face an even larger achievement gap due to your decisions. In regards to following the science, data and experts, you don't have to take my word for it. Just listen to Governor Whitmer or the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Director or the WHO or even Dr. Fauci, who are all saying elementary schools should remain open as the consequences outweigh the risks. There are also countless studies and articles showing that young kids have virtually zero risk from contracting the virus, do not transmit it to their peers at high rates and do not transmit it to their adult teachers. They've also proven that elementary schools overall are not major vectors of transmission. Now, this course of action won't be easy, but the good news is that we have countless examples of how to do this all around us. You should look to their examples of leadership and learn from them. We're talking about private schools in our backyard that have opened, other public schools in Metro Detroit, such as Wall Lake Consolidated, who opened back up yesterday, school districts in neighboring states or around the country, or even nearly all of Europe who's been open for months and they actually decreased their distancing rules to three feet. In conclusion, I'm calling on the school board to stop hurting the kids and working families in Royal Oak while hiding behind arbitrary risk ratings, to follow the science and listen to the experts and open up the elementary schools for full-time in-person learning immediately. Thank you.
Looks like Michelle Cook.
Hi, this is Michelle Cook. I reside at 824 Woodcrest and I have a son that goes to Northwood Elementary. I am just speaking tonight to urge the district to include parents in the committees that put together the, the plans that you have for, you know, these, these monthly recommitment to the, you know, COVID learning plans. I understand that, you know, we've had surveys that we've been able to participate in, where we're able to participate in public comments such as this. Many times I've heard the board say, this is not the time for dialogue. And my question is, when? When is the time for dialogue? I don't feel that I've been able to participate in a meaningful way to talk about the issues that surround the plan. On various, there's various perspectives. And so I would urge the district to allow more meaningful participation from all the stakeholders, including parents. I also wonder, speaking of surveys, if the district has surveyed virtual academy parents, to find out if they would prefer to engage in the type of remote learning that all of the students are doing right now, if they could be guaranteed that that remote learning would stay in place for the duration of this pandemic. I, I heard the last speaker and his concerns and I think that we have to look at the current concerns of various parties and see how we can meet the needs of, of all families to the best of our ability in a very difficult time. But it seems to me that one of the reasons that people have chosen the VA is because they could have a guarantee that they would not be pushed into face-to-face learning before they felt that it was safe to do so. And so are we looking at, is there a way for us to offer the remote learning option with that sort of assurance? Thank you.
Thank you. I see no additional public comment requests. Paula, do you see any, any other ones?
I do not.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment. Thank you very much. With that, we will go to communications. Mrs. Van Heesma.
Thank you, Mr. Brinker. Since our last board meeting, we've had two communications from Marlena Moore regarding Jehovah's Witnesses and from Michelle Cook, parent in the district regarding the virtual academy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to item number six, the superintendent's report. Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Brinker. Just a couple of updates. One, we have discussed at previous board meetings the desire by the district and our administrative team to expand the social and emotional support out to our students, both general education and special education students, as well as some support to our staff members and parents and just respond to new needs that might come up. In the past, this board has approved a general education social worker be added to Royal Oak Middle School and to the high school. We've discussed a proposal again to take a closer look at the scheduling of our social workers and give them more time at each of their schools, as well as expand the total number of social workers. So I'm working with the administrative team and again, just seeking your support to this initiative. And that's for 2.5 school social workers to be added to our district. I'll work with, very closely with Jane Flaherty Graham from Special Education, as well as the rest of the administrators to assign those social workers. We also heard about a new grant just this past week where there may be some funds available to offset the cost of those social workers through a social and emotional support grant. And so we, as a district, would be taking advantage of that. But we believe that it's so important now more than ever and the needs are just new and in these uncertain times, we want to reach our students and it's even more difficult when we're not in person. And so 2.5 is this number we have settled on that would be additional staff to, again, work with our administrators and schedule those folks across the district. So I have a few other items, but with that, are there any questions or comments about that recommendation? It's really something that I'll move on as a personnel item with Ms. Flaherty Graham and Mr. Wilansky.
Mrs. Anderson.
I am wondering, what would be the timeline on hiring the new people?
So we wanted to recognize that this is kind of a tough time with the holidays. We also are learning to be more proactive in our postings by reaching out to our professional organizations, local universities with the postings. So we would settle the assignments and look across the district. And then when we return the first of the year in January, we would post for these positions.
Any other questions? Mrs. Anderson.
So what, what would be the timeline that we would want to have the people in our district?
So we generally leave postings up for about 10 days. There's a great network with current social workers and other folks that work in this area. You know, as soon as there's new postings out, many people, you know, apply. Royal Oak has a good reputation for attracting many very, many good staff members and I think that network would go to work right away in January. Our hope would be that it's posted about 10 days. We do our due diligence with background checks and holding and hosting interviews. And then we would get them placed as quickly as possible. Depending on the current situation of that employee, they may have to leave another place of employment to join us or make arrangements themselves, but we would want it to move as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Okay. The other good news that we heard is that the county is going to extend the nurses program that were sent to school districts. We knew that it was certain through the end of this month and the districts are saying, you know, we're not fully back. They've been very valuable in helping us with wellness rooms in the schools. If we had to work with a student that might be sent down to the office who is ill, they've helped us with our site evaluations, you know, taking a close look at all the protocols and practices that we have in place, our screening protocols all the way through the PPE and then responding. They've been great consultants and we have had positive exposures or positive cases in the district. So we're very thankful that the county will be extending the nurses again through the rest of the school year. And so I'll have more information on that out publicly. But for right now, we're just pleased that we know that this, there's not a hard stop at the end of this month for the nurses in our district from Oakland County Health. And then lastly, but certainly not least, tonight is the last official board meeting for three of our board members on. I want to publicly thank Mr. Briggs, Mr. Brinker and Ms. Spear for their service to our school district. This is my fourth year now with Royal Oak Schools and it's been a pleasure to work with all three of them throughout. And it's interesting to watch, you know, the work that they've done over the years with our bond projects, with other community programs and plans. This district consolidated at one point in its history and had to make some really difficult decisions. And then certainly through this past year, just responding to everything. And they've always kept the focus of the students and the families at the center. They ask those kinds of questions of me. They ask me to do that with my staff and our entire team. And I'm just so appreciative for their support. So we were able to pull together a small token of our appreciation and thank you to Ms. Sutterfield for driving those around Royal Oak and dropping them. to Ms. Sutterfield for driving those around Royal Oak and dropping them at their porches so that they would have those for this evening, a small plant for them, a token commemorating the years on the school board. So for Mr. Brinker, 10 years, Ms. Beer, 10 years, and for Mr. Briggs, I believe it's 17 years, is that right, of service to the district? And then we also were able to obtain some letters of commendation from our local officials. They wrote some really nice letters to each of the board members, thanking them for their service, and that was included in their packet as well. So I know we had some of our members on the call tonight and some of our cabinet members that are here. I'd ask just for a little leeway here if any of them wanted to make a comment during this part of my report. Ms. Olson.
Yes, thank you for your commitment. It's been a pleasure serving the board, but also you've always sent the message that we're serving the community, so it goes kind of hand in hand. So it's a pleasure to me to be able to do that, and thank you. Thank you for all your support, and for our staff as well. I know our staff feels supported as well. Thank you.
Ms. Bella.
Hi, too. Would like to thank you for all your service. Your leadership has been invaluable during finance and facilities and all of your support for my team and of course for the students of Royal Oak. Thank you.
Mr. Walensky.
Well, of course, I'd like to say the same thing. We, before the meeting, Mr. Brinker was kidding me, saying, "You're going to miss me," and I really, I really am going to miss you. I miss meeting in person. I miss seeing you monthly. Gary, I don't, I feel like I've known you the whole 21 years I've worked in Royal Oak. Carrie, I'm going to miss all of you. Miss, get together after graduation and at parties, and hopefully we can again soon.
Ms. Sutterfield.
I don't want to be left out.
No.
I just want to say thank all three of you, Jeff, Gary, and Carrie. You've made my job very easy. So thank you very much, and thank you for your support as always.
So I'll remind our outgoing board members that they can serve as community members on any number of committees that we have, and if you need a list of those, we can certainly make sure you get that. And we do not want you to be strangers to the district. You, on behalf of our whole administrative team, I spoke to several administrators today on different topics, and they all wanted me to express their thanks from each of the schools, the PTA meetings that you've been able to be the liaison for at each of those meetings, the work that you've done on all of the construction plans, and really just keeping the heart of the district in your own heart as you've made decisions. And so with that, I'm very grateful and thank you, and so is my entire team. So let's give them a round of applause. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the kind words.
Would you like to say anything, any of the other board members? Ms. Sykes?
Just wanted to remind you guys that those meetings are public meetings. Just because you don't have your name tag in front of you, please feel free to come and participate. Everybody's welcome. But thank you all three of you guys for answering all my questions over the years and for all of your insight and your historical data input. Really appreciate it.
Mrs. Anderson.
Well, I don't want to get real emotional right now, but I'm going to miss all three of you. I feel like we've been in the trenches together for a long time, and I think the community, and I know I certainly appreciate all your dedication and hard work, and it's been a lot of fun, too. So thank you.
Ms. Van Heysma.
Like to echo everybody else's sentiments, just a big thank you. When I was the new person, new kid on the block, I asked a lot of questions. I still ask a lot of questions. I'll just have to figure out who the next board member that I call at 6:00 in the morning. Jeff will not be that person anymore. I just have one little question. But thank you guys for all your years of service. It's been very nice. Thank you.
Mr. Cartamon.
Yes, I want to thank all three of you. It's hard to believe that you, Carrie and Jeff have been on the board for 10 years. And Gary, it'll especially be odd because you have always been there since I've been on the board. So good luck to you all, and yes, please do not be strangers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes my report. For the last time, for you, Mr. Brinker.
Perfect. Any questions for Mrs. Fitzpatrick? I see none. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda currently consists of 7.1 personnel changes, 7.2 payment of expenses, 7.3 minutes, 8.1 general fund budget amendment, 8.2 K8 schools of choice for 2021, 2022. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. My apologies, Paula. Consent agenda consists of 7.1 personnel changes, 7.2 payment of expenses, and 7.3 minutes. Any additions or subtractions? Mr. Briggs.
Sure. Can we add 8.1? 8.2, the school of choice. 8.3, the bid pack. 8.4, Adams-Upton asbestos. 8.5, Oakland gym floor contract. 8.6, the audit acceptance. 8.7, monthly reapproval of COVID. And 8.8, the Royal Oak High School course proposals.
Thank you. Any objections or any comments about that? I see no one shaking their head. So with that, now, the consent agenda consists of 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, and additionally, 8.1 general fund budget amendments, 8.2 K8 schools of choice, 8.3 bid pack five additional awards, 8.4 Adams and Upton asbestos award, 8.5 Oakland gym floor, 8.6 2018 bond audit acceptance, 8.7 the monthly reapproval, reapproval of the extended COVID-19 learning plan, and 8.8 the Royal Oak High School new course proposal. With that, the consent agenda is passed. That will take us to item nine, public comment. Same rules apply. Would anyone like to address the board? I see Carrie Dermeyer.
Good evening, everybody. Carrie Dermeyer, 221 Spencer. But I am here as a representative of the, excuse me, the Royal Oak Education Association, and I would like to take this opportunity to thank our outgoing board members. Carrie Beer, Gary Briggs, and Jeff Brinker, your dedication to the students and staff of Royal Oak Schools is very much appreciated. As a gift of appreciation to you and your service, the ROEA will be making a donation to Blessings in a Backpack and Royal Oak Youth Assistance in your name. Our hope is that your support of Royal Oak students will continue a bit longer with these donations. We know your service will not end here. Again, Carrie, Gary, and Jeff, your years of dedication to our school community are a model for those that continue on the board and for those that will follow you. Best wishes to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much. It's very kind of the ROEA. With that, I see Tim Ciotarski.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So my thanks to President Brinker, Vice President Briggs, and Trustee Beer. I wanted to be the first one to thank you, and my technical device did not allow that. But yeah, I think all three of you so much for the service you provided for these students and more part of the community of Royal Oak for the nearly 40 years that you've all collectively served on this body. I also want to thank the Curriculum Committee for the social movements class and the increase in the budget for social work and the Equity Action Plan that was presented tonight. Those are wonderful and great steps moving forward. I'm so excited to see that. To the three of you that are leaving, again, thank you so much. I hope that none of the three of you are strangers. Your historical knowledge of the district, the volumes of knowledge that you know are incredible, and I do hope that you are still active and you join committees. And I, for one, as a newly-elected trustee, would hope that your knowledge and your dedication to the community would continue. And I do hope that myself and the two others that have been newly-elected can reach out to you for any questions we may have. Again, thank you guys so much. We do appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I see Cassandra Fitzgerald.
Hello, board members. I just wanted to send out my appreciation to the three board members who are leaving effective at the end of this meeting. You guys, over the course of the last four years of me being an employee in Royal Oak Schools, whether I were actually at the board office, seeing this meeting live in person, or over the course of the best circumstances under COVID right now being virtual, you guys have done a great job over the last four years. I also want to thank all the other employees who, I can't get my words out, I apologize, for creating the three classes at the high school. Personally, I did come from a bigger school district than Royal Oak Schools in Macomb County, and the leadership class is well needed in the, in the high school as well as the, the other classes that were being offered. Oh, and I forgot to add my address. I apologize. 2019 North Main Street. Nearest building is actually Northwood Elementary. Just to say the least, I just want to thank everybody on the board. I want to thank those administrators as well that showcased their, their work with hiring, cultural competency. And yes, I will wrap up my minutes because I know it probably goes by fast. So thank you all, and do not be a stranger.
Thank you very much. I see Mr. Mike Jeramini. Mr. Jeramini, you have the floor, and you can always get on the agenda if you want. You don't have to wait to public comment.
I appreciate that. I am Mike Jeramini. I am the principal of Royal Oak High School, and I am the current president of the Royal Oak Association of School Administrators, or ROASA. On behalf of our entire group, thank you, Jeff, Gary, and Carrie, for your service to this school district and to this community. You know, we all see firsthand how much time and energy and love are involved in serving as a school board member, and we do appreciate your work in helping us to grow and evolve, ensuring that we provide continuously better experiences for our students and our families. On a personal note, each of you served on the school board when I was hired into Royal Oak, and I sincerely appreciate the support you've given and have valued working directly with you on many projects, including bond construction and renovation, always fun conversations, engaging in cultural proficiency training together, and of course, as your children learned and thrived in our schools. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeramini. Paula, I see no other requests. Do you see any other ones?
I do not.
So with that, we will close public comment and go to board comments and liaison reports. Do we have any board comments or liaison reports? Mrs. Beer.
Thank you all for your kind words. It's been an honor and a joy to be here. You're probably more emotional than I need to be. So I'll just say thank you and good night, and I look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else next to Mr. Briggs?
Yeah, I have to follow that now. Thanks to everybody for all their kind words and everything. It's, it's been a pleasure. It's been, I'm proud of a lot of things that we've done and accomplished, and it's been a great experience, and I'll be around. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, I would like to say thank you. Again, I'm proud to have served on the board for many years. I'd like to say thank you to the people and the voters of Royal Oak for supporting me and giving me their trust and then voting me back in a second time. I'd also like to say to my fellow, say thank you to my fellow board members for putting up with me in the questions. So while we don't ask a lot of questions in this meeting, facilities and finance can get to be very in-depth. So when we ask what arbitration is, or arbitrage is, we'll get multiple definitions. So again, not only the current board members, but the past board members that served with me when I first got on and answered questions, Michael Hartman and Lisa Bradford, I appreciate all your wisdom that you've given me. But most of all, I'd like to say thank you to the administrators and the staff. It was easy to be on the board when the entire staff, from the teachers, the maintenance staff, the parapros, the administration, all want the same thing, and that's student success. So I'd like to thank you're in good hands with three new board members joining the experienced ones, and I appreciate all your support, and I wish the district continual, continued success. So thank you very much. And again, thanks for all the kind words, too. With that, if there's no other board comments, we are going to go, there's going to be a recommendation to go to closed session. That's item 11 on the agenda. So what that means is if the recommendation passes, the board members will leave this meeting. Paula will keep the meeting open. And then after the closed session, should that recommendation pass, we will come back into open session, have the performance evaluation recommendation, and then adjournment. It'll probably take us about an hour in the closed session for anybody that's watching. But with that, Mrs. Van Heysma, can I get a recommendation?
Be it resolved that Royal Oak Schools Board of Education adjourns to closed session to conduct a periodic evaluation of the superintendent as stated under Open Meetings Act, Section 8A.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Mrs. Sykes, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? I see none. Can I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Brinker?
Yes.
Mr. Cartamon?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. So with that, we are going to exit the WebEx product, and then you all have an email with a link for a Google Meet. You'll have to sign in with your Royal Oak Schools email, but we'll get there. So I'll see you all in the closed session. Thank you.
Not yet.
Going back to the Jeff's Explanation link and couldn't get it from there. Go check it.
Oh, my Lord.
I would have finally figured this stuff out, and I won't ever have to do it again.
Yeah.
Carrie does always committee.
I was thinking we're like happy hours.
I can be bought.
I still think Gary's backyard is always a good spot, whether you're a new board member, an old one, or... I'm not doing any hot tub, though, so. Thanks.
Just so you know, we are still recording.
I still don't want to see Gary come back. Might be having an issue again.
We have to wait for him. It's the last vote ever. Also, just as a reminder, tomorrow's December 11th, and that is the toy drive drop-off, the, in lieu of the Sal luncheon. They're just doing a drive-through from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. where people can drop off their donations for their toy drive instead of the sing-along and cater their lunch that they do every year. and cater their lunch that they do every year.
I can't remember. It's unwrapped, right?
Yes.
If you, I have some that I'm taking. If you have any that you want dropped off, I can pick them up on the way.
Yeah, same. I have them here on my table. We're taking ours over tomorrow.
My toys for Tots that I ordered, only half the order came in last week for drop off Saturdays. And now I said, well, I think I have some for Sal now.
I just texted Gary.
He doesn't want it to be his last meeting.
We can go with that. Perfect. So we're all back from closed session. Oh, you're good. So we are back now in open session. That'll bring us to item number 12. Do we have a recommendation?
Yes. Be it resolved that Royal Oak Schools Board of Education accepts the superintendent's evaluation as discussed with an overall effectiveness rating of highly effective. If the overall evaluation is effective or highly effective, then be it further resolved that per the provisions of the existing employment contract for the superintendent dated April 13th, 2017, the contract as written is extended for an additional one-year period through June 30th, 2024.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Mrs. Anderson, thank you very much. Any discussions? Mrs. Van Heesma.
Just to say, you know, in our discussions, we're very grateful for her leadership during this challenging time. This was a tough year to be a teacher, a superintendent, an administrator in a school district. It's tough to be a parent and a student. It's just tough this year to be in the field of education in any way, shape or form. So we appreciate her, her leadership and her adapting to all the changes that had to occur during this, this year. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mrs. Anderson.
I want to chime in on that and agree with all of that. And also I appreciate Mrs. Fitzpatrick's continual hard work. It has been a tough year for just about everybody. And, but continuing to always be diligent and work at trying to do what's best for the students and the community and I really appreciate it as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Mrs. Sykes.
I think you've given 150% through all this pandemic and weirdness this year. And I think everybody appreciates it. Glom onto the others and say, thank you so much, you know. But you know, it's always good to give a compliment and you are worthy.
Mrs. Beer.
I would just like to thank, thank you. Thank you for these last four years. Thank you for all of your leadership and just the way that you've really reshaped some of the things in our district and help people find their own space. And I, I've appreciated the way you, you work with staff and, and the teachers and the parents. And I will miss that. Thank you.
And the board members too, working with us.
Mr. Cartamone.
I just want to add my personal thank you as well. I think everything everybody said applies. Very tough year. You handled it well. Truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Briggs.
Yep, I just want to echo everybody else's sentiments and comments. And say, yeah, that's been a very unique year and it's going to continue to be. And I'm glad that you're at the helm. Going to carry us through this. And it's been nice working with you.
So any other comments? I see none. I'd like to just echo everything my associate said. That's, I'm proud of working with you, proud to have worked with you. I'm glad you're a superintendent. I'm glad we hired you. It's been a weird year. I really appreciate the fact that as president, we talk a lot and you don't roll your eyes every time I call, or at least I, I don't think you do. Especially when I call you three times in 20 minutes, but it's okay. No, I appreciate what you do for the district. I'm proud of this district. I'm proud that you're at the helm. So thank you very much. With that, with no other comments, for the last time, for the three of us, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for the comments.
Thank you.
Get care.
Good night. Thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.